Call this meeting to order, please rise for the place, Luke.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to excuse Board Member Smith.
I'll move to excuse Board Member Smith.
I'll second that.
It's been moved as seconded to excuse Board Member Stephanie Smith. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. All right, approval of board meeting minutes for October twenty second, twenty twenty five.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for October twenty second, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
It's been moved second to approve the board meeting minutes for October twenty second, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say no, nay, motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh, meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been moved second to approve the meeting agenda. Is there any further discussion or changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Booster fundraiser approvals. Oh, no, sorry, you're right.
Oh, I was like, did you know?
I know, that's my bad, I just, I glossed over it. Uh, consent agenda, sorry. Yeah.
I'll second that.
Been moving seconded to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. All right, now to boosters number six. Comes after five.
It's a great meeting, by the way.
It is.
By design, because if you saw everything that's after.
All right, approval of Alma Performing Arts Booster Fundraisers. Hi.
I have submitted, I don't know if you folks have seen it, it's nothing out of the norm of anything in the last four years.
All right. Easy enough.
I'll move for the approval of Alma Performing Arts Booster Fundraisers.
I'll second that.
It's been moved second to approve that Alma Performing Arts Booster Fundraisers, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
All right, approval of Alma Boys Basketball Booster Fundraiser.
Harry, can you hear us?
Harry, can you hear us?
Oh, I can hear you, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, this is Jamie, just um, on your, hi there, on your, uh, the holiday cash raffle and then the fifty fifty raffles. Um, per the gambling commission, each one of those are considered a raffle. And so you could only, you could only do, you can only do two per year. And your sales cannot, or your profit can't exceed five thousand between the two.
Okay, we will make that note.
Yeah, all on the gambling website.
Yes, is that new this year? Because that, it was increased to three raffle.
It's the same, if you go to the gambling website. It's all, it outlines it perfectly there.
Yeah, if you think that we're going to be upset to do one less raffle, if that one doesn't make enough, I don't, rest assured. We don't want to take on more, so we'll stay within that.
I just want, yeah, I just, I think they're both great raffles, I just want to make sure that you stay within that, so you don't get.
Uh, perfect, thanks.
Yeah.
I'll move for the approval of Alma Boys Basketball Booster Fundraisers.
I'll second that.
It's been moved second to approve that Alma Boys Basketball Booster Fundraisers, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
High cap report.
Okay. Uh, well hopefully you've got it as well, but.
Turn sharing well.
She'll be out there in a second. Our plan is very similar in the last couple of years since I've become the coordinator. We are starting our sessions in the end of November, going into um, December for after school for three weeks, so the younger kids are going on Tuesday and the older kids are going on Thursday for the elementary school level. Um, the second session we hope to have in February because we are still doing our um, universal screening in January. Uh, all second and fifth graders. Uh, so that they can participate in that second session as well. And then have a third session in April, so each of the sessions will be three weeks long. And we, and we just hired a teacher to do that. So it's very exciting. Um, we also brought in science on wheels from the Pacific Science Center. Um, on the thirtieth and the thirty first of October, which was all about math. It was two days of regional workshops as well as an assembly for each day, so it was for two days. The kids had a really good time, they much enjoyed the workshops. Um, and it seems like feedback from the assembly was, it was okay, because there were some higher math concepts. But not, sorry, our kids were like, I don't know what probability means, that kind of idea. Um, but, but I really do um, think that I expect a lot of discussion and using hands-on materials to learn math, which was really exciting for all of our students. And helping our high cap students get something else within the regular curriculum as well. Um, all of our after-school academy workshops classes will have a UDL design model, so they are, might all be reading something in literature, but they're able to learn the material the way they need to, as well as be able to present what they've learned. Um, that way as well, so they get to pick the designs that they want to do. Um, I think that's about it, other than.
You've been running like pushing STEM events for a while and you're expanding it into the high cap program. Really, kind of like, how are you modifying from what you've learned previous years? Been doing this for a while now, you're getting pretty.
As far as um, kind of, that universal design piece, sure. Um, so just like we was scaffolding accommodated for kids who have IDPs. We're doing that on a basis for kids who can think differently, so not everyone's highly capable in academic area. Some of them are highly capable in art or music and um, meeting with teachers and discussing how could we change some of the things that we're asking them to present? In project-based type learning, what else could we bring in? So fifth grade's in wax museum for a long time, but that's a great example. They get to research a person and then dress up like them and talk about them. And some of them make posters, some of them make a brochure, some of them make a PowerPoint. Um, the, the idea that they can have not only creativity, but also a different thought process, so if a kid asks to do something much higher and had a kid wanting to do trigonometry, I was like, okay. Um, giving them the allowance to kind of expand for themselves and learn for themselves and become that independent learner as well, just kind of the idea, and I feel like teachers with all of the training that we've gotten in the last few years too. Have really kind of got more open about, oh yeah, that makes sense, or that would be cool if I let them do that, when they're open to the kid's idea of their advocating for themselves and how they want to learn.
Awesome.
That's what I mean.
That was it?
Okay.
Great.
That was the, because I know you've worked really, really hard on it and you've worked hard on mapping out the different standards. And then you're really great at like the UDL model and scaffolding from the IPN. And then how you're stretching to now taking your already in place STEM nights, but then how do you scaffold it? Out to the high cap population and that's where your efforts and work has been, so you're using a similar model. Both function and in activity, but for a new population.
Trying to.
So, appreciate that.
Any, any question? Because we need approval for us, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Kind of remember, I think, yeah, one of the kids came home and said something about probability and I thought to myself, probability.
Oh, building this experience family, but. Yeah, they were talking about um, flipping coins.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then also, if you have this many chances to get like on a wheel, like these colors, what's the probability you'll get one of these colors versus one of these colors if we had different? You just had four versus like eight of them. So it was cool, but it's sixth grade now. There's that.
We, we were thinking about adding a casino unit to sixth grade.
Some probability, that's the numbers there, we said, sure, OSBI would really like that.
Yeah.
Maybe the high, some of the high cap kids can change my luck.
Let's talk probability.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, CTE report.
All right, so our CTE report is essentially, I'm wrapping in some career college readiness division too. But really, the whole, whole goal is, how can we grow our economy? Um, you know, and it's something that we, I presented to teachers um, earlier this year in the summertime, but you know, education is the one that can help grow our workforce. Um, and with Grace Harbor County, we're, you know, deep water port, we have Satsev Development Park, we have rail, we have a lot of things going for us. But one of the things that industry doesn't, doesn't stay here, because they'll say when they do an assessment, we don't necessarily have the labor force, the skilled labor force. So we had to change that, so that's what we're working on as we go through career pathways. Um, and so today I'm just going to present to you our strategic plan, it's going to be, you know, kind of a quick overview, so I'm going to run through the slides. But, and a lot of stuff that I'm going to be presenting is similar stuff that you will be approving later on in the meeting. So really, our, our mission is to transform our students into self-reliant adults that can uh, have the skilled labor, be good citizens, all of that stuff that we want for all of our students. And we're using that through current career pathways and also our student, student leadership and, and other opportunities. Um, our staff, we did add some new staff, we're very excited about um, adding Scott Quillan to our, our uh, fleet with, at the middle school with digital essentials and IT. We also um, have a new ag teacher, Casey Lunsford, he's from Montana and Oregon and comes with a wealth of experience. And then we also hired Amanda Guerrero uh, for our math, who has an immense amount of experience too. And we'll continue to run Skills USA, FFAHOSA and um, FBLA. Uh, grant pursuit this, this year, you'll notice that we actually, not as much in CTE because we really have done pretty well there, so about sixty one thousand. Career college readiness due to the gear up grant, limitless grant and financial literacy, that's around just over six hundred thousand. Um, last year we secured, for CTE, you'll notice we secured just a little over a hundred and seventy-three thousand that we use for some different supplies and equipment, like you can see there, the VR codes, VR glasses and things. Um, and then with CCR again, with the same uh, grants that we have for this year, uh, right around the six hundred thousand. In the red there, you can see this is what some of the grant money purchased, but also um, our CTE funds. So the VR headsets, quantal- quantitative camera system that we're using for sports training system program, it's going to be really cool. Um, we also have a high-end designed laptops, more student Chromebooks, powder coating ovens, welding fab tables, iPads. Rehab equipment for our new sports medicine program, cameras, 3D printers, miter saw, I mean, and you can see it there. So we have, we're definitely investing in a lot of different career pathways. And to date, for the past ten years, we, I have, along with my team, we've been, you know, one point two million dollars in, in grants. That's above and beyond what we're bringing in, so that's how we get this new equipment and stuff, to stay on top of technology. With that, we do have our kids working, we have some work site learning placements where we did have just about seventy thousand dollars earned by thirteen CTE students. Some five apprentices, um, right around eighty-one thousand dollars earned, two apprentices did earn their two thousand hour journeyman card. Uh, very proud of that, we also have hosted multiple speakers for in career and college readiness, union, military. Ms. De Shapansky does a wonderful job and now with Europe on that, we also just continue to add that breadth of, of information. We also have twenty plus CTE, CTE leadership members competing in our job interview event, again, trying to get our students exposed to industry in a variety of ways. Um, our apprentice program, you, you know that we've been doing that for a while. Um, we are next cohort cohort four, uh, for this year is only one junior, it's the first female that we have been able to be in the apprenticeship program. Um, and you'll say, well, why do you only have one? We still do have seniors that started as juniors that are in the apprenticeship program, but that's kind of part of it, when we started with younger, with juniors. Now they stay in for two years, and so now we're not necessarily bringing in new apprentices. Additionally, we are having concerns and issues, and so are companies with labor and industry. So, um, to be continued. We did get our nursing program started, we have twelve, twelve applicants, eight accepted, six of them completed and, and are certified. And you know, you say, well, six completed, but you had eight in there, well, we did have some kids that they just found out, one, this wasn't a career pathway that they were looking for, they weren't in it for a month ago, well, I don't think this is it. And then the other student just wasn't quite ready, I mean, it's a pretty rigorous program. Um, and then this year we had seven applicants, seven accepted, we have six in progress, and the cool thing this year is that we have two interns. So Summit Pacific Medical Center actually created a CNA internship for two of our students, one is eighteen and one is under eighteen, the under eighteen lends its own challenges. But what they're doing is they're being leaders of the, this next cohort, but also now going to start being able to work on the floor, and they've created them as internships because we can't just have them do a twelve-hour shift, because that's really what they're, you can have them do, so. So it's been wonderful, but it's definitely been a learning process for both Summit Pacific Medical Center, I don't want to give kudos to them because they're, that's a big, it's a big look. But also even for us, just how do we connect industry and education?
I would say that on that C, on that CNA, uh, personally having one of those students do it last year, uh, who's now at college, uh, there are local hospitals that have acknowledged and are offering some, actually some really cool job opportunities, and some of those jobs are starting at thirty-one dollars an hour while they're in college, so.
That's awesome, and that's really what we wanted, wanted to be a stackable credential.
Yeah.
They don't pay for college, all of them.
And the, and the the eye-opening moment when it was like, you're going to what, you know? Just from her looking at going, wow, so it's, it's pretty, it's pretty impressive.
And even our interns are going to make, you know, it's above minimum wage.
Great.
So, uh, we also, um, our community credit union also has a teller internship. It's something that we probably weren't as aware of, but they have, they have one per year, so we've got seven years in the making, so we've got seven interns. Two of those have advanced to full-time positions as in accounting and/or member services. The one that was in accounting, she was running start, and then she's just started working on her accounting department, so it's, it's been a really cool thing, and then you have uh, the three girls with the pizza, they've been through the program, and then Roxy right there is the one that currently is the intern, and you'll see her at the bank and you'll see, um, not Nancy, Jennifer, they're sisters, Nancy, so you'll see them there, and it's pretty cool to see. We also had our fire science program last year, um, we, we did have eleven students in that, nine of them completed and six of them were proficient. Um, it was, we have it on pause this year just because of transition with the fire department, we're hoping to be able to implement it again. Um, and also really kind of looking at, can we do something with AMS with this too, so that's to be continued. It works sometimes and not, but.
Start my way.
I know. Uh, the other one that we have is the Innovation Academy with manufacturing and natural resources, so this last year was our first year started program. We had twenty-nine applicants, twenty-six accepted, uh, five that we accepted, five. We had adjustments and we added three, three of them, twenty-six finished last year, that was like thirteen ninth graders and thirteen tenth graders. This year, we continued with the application process, uh, for incoming ninth graders and a few tenth graders were interested. So now our current program has six ninth graders, thirteen tenth graders and eight eleventh graders. And one of those juniors is in that apprenticeship program with um, some of, with bond company. And then we continue our ag co-op program, which is a wonderful program to get our kids those basic core essential skills, uh, where we have twenty teens that get paid a five hundred dollar stipend through donations and through our Alma Ag boosters, and then also some of those students will raise a pen and three rabbits to sell at the Grace Harbor County Fair, and then we continue with our supervised agriculture experiences through our FFA program. Career college readiness, we continue that, again, we had career connection speakers through the trades, colleges, military, you name it, we had it, we had our career connection day where all tenth graders went to Grace Harbor College and saw their multiple programs, plus they selected an industry tour. So we had seven different industries that put on the tour for our tenth graders. And then we had our take flight career connection fair with colleges, military and industry. Um, and then this year, our hope is, is now to add in more of speaker components also in the afternoon. Um, the cool thing, and I'm just going to brag about it, uh, middle school, we hosted our first career day. And it was wonderful, Alma and Jessica did, did an amazing job, brought in even some of our former grads. But had the kids, all the sixth, seventh and eighth graders for the full day, listen to at least five different career speakers. And they got to choose them, but it was, it was great, and that's something we kind of wanted, maybe not all day for the high school, but connected with that take flight fair. Uh, also, we continue with industry tours and, uh, in workshops, medical career series with WSU School of Medicine, Summit Pacific Medical Center. Seventh grade health mentors, which they're coming on the eighteenth of this month to do this again. Um, and then with Europe, we've really been able to just put career college readiness and tours on steroids. If you will, and I mean, we've taken kids on an overnight trip this summer to WSU and Central Washington University. Uh, we've got kids on U Dub campuses, whether it's Tacoma or Seattle, St. Barnes, we've done local, we've, we've been out there, we've got triatrain, the kids were actually handling um, big equipment. Um, and our career connection day, so we're able to, we've been, we've been doing a lot, our gear up team is amazing, and I just can't emphasize enough how wonderful it is. And with that, they also big time support with FASFA and WASPA, I'm happy to report. Last year, um, we were just at fifty percent, um, and we had the highest growth in our Hispanic Latino population and our low-income population, so that, I feel really good about that. This year, right now, we are already at twenty-three percent of completion rate for the Alma High School seniors. Still going to work on in East Grace Harbor High School, but we're, we're at twenty-three, which is amazing for this time of year. We also continue with the future work, uh, college fairs, round table, in round tables. Continue with life readiness, uh, we have a post family addiction night, youth addiction night, WSU School of Medicine, STEM family night, CTSO Winter Festival, which is in December. And the Community Health Cast, if I could encourage you to come and join one of the events that we do, that one that we have in May, it's May twenty-first this year. It is truly amazing that we partner with WSU School of Medicine, Summit Pacific Medical Center, and you ask students that are actually doing a project where they take on a health issue and now present that, and then what's the problems, and then they're presenting some of their potential solutions. Um, we also continue to offer dual credit, you can see there that we have six different, seven different colleges, we added college in the high school this year with personal finance. One seventy-four, so we have a hundred and seventy-one college credits that we offer through our CTE programs. Uh, which if a student had all that, it'd be right around sixty-two thousand dollars that is already covering for free. We also continue with our MOUs with AJAC, WSU School of Medicine, Grace Harbor Fire and Rescue. Some of Summit Medical Center Perry Tech, students can actually earn a thousand dollars by going through our manufacturing program because they see what we're doing, and then our carpentry. Um, we also continue to offer industry certifications, I think a unique place is that like the forklift certification is pretty cool, um, and things like that. Uh, we also continue to offer twenty-one different options for CTE graduation readiness pathways, that's one of the like eight pathways that a kid, student would need to have. Could use in order to graduate if they can't pass the S back and those kinds of things. Uh, our CTSO success has been amazing, we continue with local, regional and state success. Um, we were, we had, Candice's daughter went to National Band, I haven't had a chance to talk to her about it, but I've heard really great things that she just loved every minute of it. Um, and that's the first time we've had one in twenty-five years, so. Uh, it was pretty exciting, um, we didn't have any teams go this year, but we also were three-star national chapter. And we do look at, and look that this next coming year, we should have some potentially national, national teams going with Skills USA, things like that, so. Uh, just, but we did really well just building that, all the programs and having middle school to involve. Other program highlights are our seventh grade health science that we actually have now under CTE. Fully implemented the high school beyond plan, the school links through Eagle Time. Uh, implemented the sports trainer program that Connor McNeil is overseeing, so that's really adding the kinesiology and the whole body uh, concepts so the students understand the physical fitness. Secured health science grant, where we invested in sports medicine, sports trainer equipment. Uh, secured aerospace manufacturing grant, where we got those multifunctional fabrication tables and the gear up grant. Um, which we started fully in January. Future is just to continue the current programs we have, focus on career pathways with health science and information technology. Especially with our new hire at the middle school, seeing some potential of growing that IT pathway. Um, where we are adding that the middle school digital essentials and computer science and esports in the future. We're doing, really focusing on digital essentials and just got to tell you, our kids really don't know technology, they think they do because of this. But they really don't know how to use programs, and so Scott's been a great addition to get some of those funding models going again. Um, continue our gear up grant internships for juniors and seniors, again, this is always, I always talk about this, that it is harder than it should be because of LNI and different things, it's a work in progress. Um, continue to update our labs and equipment, and then we are adding a CTE pickup to our fleet, um, and in a surplus the red board. And with that, that is the CTE.
Cool things to know, um, CW finance one seventy-four is a big deal, because that's a five-credit quantitative math class. Not just an occupational math class, students complete that, all in the high school class would have all of their college math requirements completed. If they're in a non-math required major. So math, college math and English proved to be the two largest barriers of college persistence. And by taking financial algebra, which has been a class to help students graduate, has now become a class that which should drive our post-secondary. Most of us now, they turn it on math required majors, effectively, you're now done with college math for the rest of your life. So, and we can make that statement, that, that was a great motion in our area. Um, Scott Quillan, I got a chance to go hang out in that class and getting to teach computers. Uh, this is kind of planned, there's, the students are tearing apart old surplus computers that have A drives, floppy drives. And then kind of understanding like, what is this? Well, that there serves floppy drive, so just a great experience in that. Uh, and then honestly, just had an incredible meeting, I mean, I've had a few great meetings with Christie, it has been like the last couple of weeks. But just one day, I'm just mapping out how now we can start really being intentional about where all the O's academic standards plug in. And I just feel like we've had a lot of great time together and trying to like show how we're elevating the opportunities for students. Then the very last one is, I don't know how late you want to stay, you probably want to get going. So, um, we did host, I was going to save it for the superintendent report. But maybe I'll do it now so you can get on the road, but we have the ability to host the Washington Student Judgment Council um, on their site tour, and, and that's a really new deal, because the council is made up of the council presidents, so the council president is the professional organization for every major university. It has the state board of community technologists, OSB. It has the State Board of Community Technologists, O S P I, State Board of Education. So every state agency sits on the Washington Student Achievement Council to discuss how student achievement intersects. And last Tuesday, we hosted WASAC for their tour at Summit Pacific to go see the hospital on how by placing students on these job sites. And to be clear, the, the CNA program was only two programs like it in the state. Was us and Quincy, Quincy didn't start till this fall. So ours really was last spring, the only program like in the state. And it was through process with the Washington State Board of Nursing to allow sixteen-year-olds to work around HIPAA requirements. To go to work in hospitals, so Christie mentioned that, we had a sixteen-year-old, an under eighteen-year-old working. Um, that took a lot of, if you're effectively not following state statute, but the state is allowing you to not follow state statute, takes a lot of paperwork. Um, so it was definitely a program that we gotta show off by interest of every state education agency in the state of Washington. Who is here on Tuesday to come tour the program, walk through and then receive nothing but rave reviews on. We can put our young people to work, so it's, it's, the numbers are small, but the numbers are small because we're under a magnifying glass. Because no one in the state can, and, and it is doing, no one in the state is doing it, but no one else in the state can do this, only Alma can do this. Scored, um, by statute. Is that accurate?
It's been a cool opportunity, but it's been a real big lift and learning curve. I, you know, again, Summit Pacific Medical Center, wow, you know, without a partnership like that, it would be the same with, with our apprenticeships. Through AJAC and our, our industry partnerships, it takes, it takes a lot. Cause we're, we're recognizing that education and industry, we, we operate differently. And so now we gotta come that, that, to meet that same language together.
So in this last year, we removed college math as a major barrier for every single one of our students who feel that they can't pass college math. They can now have it done at Alma High School. We've paved the way to have students go to work in medical fields with statute provision. Um, I mean, it's just been a great year in mapping out the academic standards and how students will achieve, so um, lot of success, a lot of eyes, a lot of lies. I think it might be hard to feel like we can celebrate the CNA program when you have so much stress on whether or not someone's gonna, you know. Uh, but I just, so if you didn't want to get around to the orders, but moving my, one of my good of the orders up.
Oh, good, um, yeah, the, the thing is, and our numbers are gonna be low in some of these, because you know what, our students aren't quite ready for this either. Um, you know, they haven't been out working, um, you know, the, they're finding, well, this is, this is now adult world, this is different. Um, and so it's, it's a good experience, it's, it's a win-win, even if they don't complete or if they think they failed, it's still a win. Because the learning, um, right now can fail forward. And so, and then we're also learning how to put a lot of wraparound services with our kids, I mean, I'm meeting with Summit Pacific, I mean, even with the fire program. And even apprentices, apprentices, I, seems like there's just, even once a week, there's gonna be a meeting that we're gonna have to talk about students and how we can support that too. So, so it's all good stuff, and then I'm excited for the internship opportunities too. And, and with that, that also helps with, ruin our sports medicine program, what Matt Crumley's doing. This is now where we have kids now working within, within the school and it's kind of, it's a non-paid internship, but it's an extension in classroom. Cause now they're gonna get some different type of experience that will connect to that and get those work skills going too, so, lots of good stuff. Um, Zach, you guys have any questions on CTE and career college news? So next is the alternative learning, um, experience programs that um, I support overseeing. You know, we did some change up of staff this, this year, um, which is, it's a great LAE team. Um, so we have um, an LAE um, office tech and learning coach, which is Melody Miller. Um, a parent learning coach is Maris, Marisol Marino Ramirez, this is an app, new position. Melody kind of, if you will, took um, LaVina's place, but just different. Um, Marisol is a new position because we have formed um, a s- outside contractor. And now we have somebody there uh, that can work with students and we've changed that up and I'll explain that. ESV and ASU coordinator, Tim Lizell, and our East Grace Harbor High School teachers, uh, Jeff Sowers and Bill Collins. And then we also added enhanced services with Becky Spidey now being on staff, uh, to support our IUPs and students with other, other needs. Which has been great in all of our AL programs. So you're gonna see here that uh, our updates, um, it's works. So created a CT, uh, ALD dashboard. And so what this is, is to share with all of my ALD stat, so that we can go in and um, just like, uh, for example, we have shared uh, meeting agendas, we have our schedule, which now they can click that. And uh, have that readily available to them, so trying to just have so, so that we have quick access. And then this will also help get us consistent with some of our forms in the way we, we have operations and procedures. Which is really one of the main things we're trying to work on um, this year. Uh, also, we created um, uh, secured our enrollment process, um, so that we had a fluid understanding of how students can approach um, AL opportunities. And you can see here that they have choices with ESV, Open Doors, um, and uh, East Grace Harbor High School. Uh, so again, this was just trying to make sure that we could have um, a process and, and things like that. We also uh, have an intake form. Uh, that, this is essentially an application, but we were trying to, you know, make it so that again, getting, having students and families understand, you know, ask why are you looking for? An ALD option and then we review that application and then they go through the process to, to get accepted. Um, and then we also have a, a schedule agreement where we're really making sure that students know when they can be on campus and at what time. Um, and then for us to know, you know, what are their transportation issues and things like that. And you'll notice that this is split out with East Grace Harbor High School in-person program and then our, also our East Grace Harbor High School that is a GED focused. That's where we did some changes uh, this year. And then we also just, we also added our agreement and expectations, so that when we're meeting with students at the very beginning. Or, you know, again, covering uh, the law and the, what's required, but also securing what is the responsibility of the parent? What's the, the student roles and things like that, so that we're all on the same page, um, is, again, trying to just have that consistency. So just gonna talk about each of the four programs that we have under the ALB umbrella. First off is um, East Grace Harbor High School, um, you'll see there that we have the um, in-person, uh, more in the in-person model. Uh, with weekly pers- participation, so what we're, our goal is to increase that so that students are participating. We improve the, improve the school climate and also ensure that all students have a transition plan after they're done. So that we, whether it's post-secondary, work, whatever the case may be. Overview, we're located now in annex three and four, so we moved some rooms. And so this helps uh, concentrate where Jeff and Bill can focus on their students and we don't have a lot of cross paths. Um, it is, if you know the way the annex was set up, it, it, we had some, some issues last year with too many students crossing paths and then creating havoc and noise. Uh, we also use mastery learning and then you'll see there that this year we have seven seniors in the class of twenty point five graduates. So for the East Grace Harbor part, we had a hundred percent graduation rate. And you'll see our numbers are low at the beginning and then they started to increase in June and, uh, sorry, that shouldn't be January. Uh, but June and, uh, excuse me, September, November. And then end, at the end of the year last year, because we were transitioning and trying to balance between our open doors program. And our uh, East Grace Harbor High School program. So some adjustments that we made this year with students, we have a student of the month where we focus on themes similar to the elementary. But we'll have like AM and Pings, trying to figure out what, how do we build that school culture, emphasize, notice it connects to our goals. Um, attendance promotion, um, in some incentives. We also have gear up connected weekly with Eagle Time with each A M and P N session. So Amber and Jessica meet with the East Grace Harbor students on a regular basis. We also have True North coming in we, as a weekly option, so our students, we're making sure that our students are, excuse you, getting the services that they need. And we still need more, but we're, it's a work in progress.
Can you, um, before you go further? Um, yeah, open doors, no, no, this is fine. Um, you can see this, you can see in September twenty twenty-four, forty students were enrolled in open doors down to fourteen, can you go back one? You said, should be able to hit just the back arrow, right?
Yeah, sometimes it just.
And then you'll notice that the East Grace Harbor High School numbers have gone up. Can you go back one more to your links, I don't need to click on any links, but I think it's just worth pointing out, cause I wanna kind of pull together the whole picture.
Me, we're, our process.
What you worked on is there, here. Okay, so what was happening was students were coming into East Grace Harbor and immediately being pulled into open doors. Uh, the district has two East Grace Harbor High Schools. Right, and they're both named the same, kind of intentionally on not knowing which one you're in. Um, and it creates a level of infusion, but we actually have two East Grace Harbor High Schools. We have East Grace Harbor High School Open Doors and East Grace Harbor High School ALA. I think you're glossing on it, but I kinda wanna call out how much work you actually did do. And I wanna kind of pull a picture, pull, pull a whole picture. So students were being put into East Grace Harbor High School Open Doors. Open Doors is a program for students that are so far behind academically that they can't get a high school diploma. Um, which means that you are so far that, that there's no way, right? Like you're, you, you have to show that a student is actually officially dropped out of high school and they want to reengage. Or they're so credit deficient, they can't make up the credit deficiencies. So what Christie had to do is, we were over qualifying, Open Doors does provide much more flexibility. But you get much more flexibility because you are able to show that the student needs that much more flexibility. So what Christie had to do is shore up how students were being assigned from ALA into open doors. Cause they're really different, to say, well, the students aren't so credit deficient, but they should be in open doors and had to totally redesign the intake process. On what credits they had to make sure students are appropriately placed in the school they are in. So this page, um, you went real fast, and this isn't a criticism. Um, you went real fast and I think it almost undercuts how much work you actually put in. To completely and totally, I mean, this intake process, now the students have to come in and assess and show where they are academically. Right, like are you at the sixth grade math, seventh grade math, or, or you at eleventh grade math, do you have the individual stability? Now that we've tested you, we have, we, we look at your transcript, how far behind you are, do we look at your ability? And then we're placing students appropriately, then Christie had to come back through and replace all of the students in the program. Where they're supposed to be based upon what their academic history says and completely redesign where every student was. Which comes with its own can of worms, because now you're having to have a conversation with a parent and I was in this program, but now I'm in this program. But you should have always been in this program. You can see this year, the, the large FTE numbers of how many students she's moved around. So this was a huge undertaking on a complete restructure, and this was all last year's work. On a complete redesign and rebuild on what's gone on, I don't know if you've gotten to this year's work, but if you don't talk about it, I will talk about our meeting on, on the thirty-first. On where you're going now. So I just wanted to make sure that we kinda, I wanted to pull them all together so you could see the whole picture. Of all these slides, cause these, these three slides were actually kind of telling us a whole story.
Well, and then, so then that next part is the open doors, like you was explaining, um, how we've kind of changed the numbers there. And so you'll see, we still have si- similar goals, we do wanna in, increase in-person weekly participation, but open doors policy actually has different. Um, rules of minimum qualifications for us to work with the students. But we, but we wanted to go above and beyond that, cause we know the more we see these students, the more we can engage with them, the sooner we can get them up to a par. Uh, in order to pass the GED and or get their diploma, so we really are emphasizing, please come, we wanna see you, we wanna know you're safe. Uh, we have now that, that agreement with both uh, guardian, parent guardian and students, so that this is when you're supposed to be on campus. This is when you're not supposed to be on campus, and if we don't see you, we're calling. Things like that, so we're really trying to make sure that that's all in order, um, because we got a lot of moving parts now with, with these students. Um, and so with the open doors, really, this is, it is kind of, it does meld into East Grace Harbor High School. We do serve the, they do, those same teachers can serve the open doors students, but also ESV can also serve open doors students. Um, and then it's, it's primarily, the minimum requirement is they have to be sixteen years old on September first of the school. Um, and then credit deficient, there's a certain calculation that we have to do, so we went through and made sure that we have those all in order. We do have it where they can go for the diploma, but then we also, I did, I did apply this summer because we, we needed to update our GED. Program, and so now we have the diploma route and then we have the GED route, and now we have another school code that we have to add, but, oh, well. Uh, hopefully I don't have to do another SIP, um, for the, this one, but uh, but, so this gives us our kids new options. So last year, we did have nineteen seniors in the open doors program that graduated, so that was sixty-five point five percent. That was, um, that's an improvement. Um, we had one junior that actually graduated early, and that's one of the things that is kind of a neat option with open doors. Is it does allow kids to go at a quicker rate, we can use certain things online, them going for the GED. And um, now with mastery in place, the GED, let's say they have no credits in um, English, math, social studies and science. If they passed all four of those GEDs, they can earn all their English credits, which is four, all of their math cred- credits, which is three, social studies, three. Science, they can only earn one, because the GED in science is considered a non-lab science, so they can earn their one non-lab science credit. So right there, they, they checked off a lot, and then once we get that, again, it depends on their cost scores and where they're at. Then with, then we can move them, we're working with Jeff and Bill, or completely online through ESV to get their, their left ins and those kinds of things. So it gives us some options. Um, you'll see there, we also cert- have uh, seven GED students that are fully certified. Uh, one um, who has a GED plus and graduated, uh, three of them were just, I just want the I GED back and called them, said, hey, you're close to getting your diploma this year, you wanna do it? They laughed at this. And then we have three that actually are returning to complete their diplomas, so there's, there's that positive thing, so it's kind of like. I really like the GED, if the students can do that, because it, it one, it's one thing that if, at least if we can give them through that, they have something, that's why we have them. Um, and then, so how we did some adjustments here, this is where we moved Jeff and Bill to annex three and four. And then that left that middle room open to bigger space. What that is used now, we have Marisol, that is our parent there to, for GED support. And also credit recovery support for the high school, cause that's also something that Tim oversees. Um, and then it's also Becky Spidey will work with some students in small groups. And then we also use that space for our Innovation Academy, when we're pulling them out in E-Skills time for math and ELLA. And so we'll have small groups that will work with Becky up in annex two, and then Tim Lizell will work with uh, other students down in the, the ag area. So we have a system, it's actually, it's a, it's a lot of moving parts. Not everyone understands that, but we, we have a purpose and a plan and place and, and really working at serving students. We also still have Europe connecting with those students and then True North, um, having options that are out at the annex. And we arranged for Ursula to be at, in the annex earlier, one day a week for our AL students. Um, and then ESV, um, is a little different in goals, just because they are off, off campus. So they are completely online, so we have, want to increase their monthly pacing goal, we want to increase. Passing of core courses, increase parent engagement with virtual conferences, increase uh, students on track for graduation. The overview is we do serve K two twelve, full-time and part-time. Our part-time is primarily only for high school, but again, sometimes there's special cases, but they have to be a minimum of a half-time ESV. Uh, we got away from these one and two and trickling in and out, it was a mess, hot mess, and um, so stop that. Of ESV, last year we had twelve seniors graduated a hundred percent, and then plus we had twelve that were shared with EHS, so they were co-enrolled. And you can see the numbers there, we start out at the, um, you know, last year, beginning of year, September with twenty-nine FTE. Actually, this year was starting out in Sept- uh, September, where we were already bigger, where we are at forty-two. Um, and so, and then you can see where we're focusing mostly twelfth, eleventh and tenth and ninth grade. Um, our middle school numbers in ESV went down, um, for this year. Um, our K's, K through fifth grade is roughly the same, but it did go down a little bit. The concern that I have with, um, just a second, let me see that. The concern that you see here is that the goal with ESV is also to capture, cause we have the multi-district. Um, application is, well, I don't know what, it's not certification, but we have that stability where we are in the tight district, which can be, can be a really good thing. And that's what we're working towards building. Um, but we're not capturing a lot right now of, out of Alma area students. Uh, we do have roughly ten, but that's not a whole lot, that's, you know, we're gonna, we wanna shoot for a little bit more there. So a lot of these numbers are really kind of, um, I will say especially middle school, intermediate. Is you're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul a little bit, and it's really just giving kids options of where they want to be and feel comfortable. The battery different. With that, with ESV, the adjustments we made is we did hire, Marisol is also the learning coach for here, so she's supporting um, ESV. She's supporting Tim in, in that paperwork and all that stuff, cause this is a lot of paperwork. Uh, we also, what we did different too is we, we changed, we went away from accelerate, using accelerate teachers for all of the students. So we only use accelerate for teachers for K two eight, it's expensive. And then, then we changed to Edge Annuity for nine through twelve, where Tim Lizell is the teacher of our group. Hence, that's why you've approved Tim to be. Hence that's why you've approved Tim to be Spanish, but we have kids taking Spanish online. And, and also we use Ed New, the already credit recovery. So it makes sense for us to do that. And now with, with Para onsite, doing not only GED, but supporting him, it allows us to, to make that happen. Um, it is all off campus, um, and, um, they must have the half, minimum of a half FTE to be in the list again. Um, ASU, we also, again, this provides students an opportunity to earn high school and college credits. Uh, they can test, uh, college, um, with, you know, kind of safely. Um, and if they fail forward, we can usually recapture it and it can take it again and/or get other options. Uh, credits toward, we worked on a credits towards, um, the AA transfer degree. Um, and in assist with graduation requirements, I will tell you, we, um, have less emphasis on ASU right now. Because, uh, we realized we needed to have, um. Standards in place like any other student going into college course. So, um, we're looking at that, we want it to be stock watched on up. And they need to, if, if they can't, if either they're passing the S back or they're passing the advocacy place or. So you're going to see here that, you know, here's the expectations, uh, that we have packet and then also. Uh, what, how many credits they can take. Um, you know, we had some students that were taking, uh, more classes of more college classes than what is reasonable. And so are we really teaching them anything about what college is like? And so we've kind of adjusted there. You'll also see where we, if I reviewed what classes a lot of our kids are doing, because the reason why we set up ASU is to see what was the needs for our students. So that we can figure out where do we want to go with college and high school. Um, and really that's the hope. The hope is, is not have ASU all the time, but hopefully transition so that we can have college and high school, uh, programs. And then you'll see there, we worked on this year is the AA, uh, transfer degree. So I almanized it so that this is very much Elma of what a student, where they wanted to go to Alma High School. And you've got ASU, this is what they would do. And even if they started in sophomore year. Um, and with all the, the requiredness, we can do this. So this is the plan that is the place that would check off. All of the high school credits in all of the college required and credits for the AA. Cause the biggest thing now, the freshman year, they have to really focus on getting your Spanish done, getting your world language, because ASU doesn't offer that. There's certain P E credits, those kinds of things. So we really have to be intentional, because even in running start, we have the issue. Running start doesn't offer all the credits that are needed for graduation either. So. So that was ASU, um, and, uh, what we did for adjustments. Um, and it is coursework off campus. And students can make arrangements to come in with Tim, but again, we need it so that if you want. If you want a virtual experience, if you want a college experience, then you're going to have to live that experience. And so they're off campus. One, it's just a liability. And two, we just didn't have, um, we wanted to make sure that we knew where the kids are. So. Um, our goals this year is align all the ALE programs with consistent documents. So work in progress. Uh, you can see we got, we've, we've made some moves already. Um, aligning all our ALE standards, uh, with standard operating procedures. Again, we have four different programs. So we have four different programs running four different ways. Ridiculous. Um, all ALE, uh, accessible to, um, well, I want to get all of our ALE on the, um, the school district webpage. I got almost all the documents you can see there with the dashboard. That's, I just need to get that up on the, on the webpage. Review, we do need to review our curriculum and courses, so I will be coming back to you guys to probably do some approvals or reviews of some of those things. Um, and then I want to make, we want to make progress on all of our school improvement planes, essentially just making sure that our students are supported. The way they need to be. So. That is the ALE report.
The, um, 31st, Christie also brought in, um, professionally here to kind of sit through. So we're already making, so the first step was making sure we understood the programs and students are being appropriately placed in the right program for their needs. And this next step is ensuring that within each program, we have all the appropriate records and documentation. The students are meeting standard and competency. And there's multiple ways they can do it. As Chris said, you can take the GED or you can take CASIS test and you can test them. And show that, you know, I might not have done when I needed, but I'm actually at an 11th grade standard. We'll understand law if they're at an 11th grade standard, that's where their credit should be sitting. But do we actually have the evidence and the data to back up that that's where they're at? Or are we just awarding the credit? So going back now, it's going back through and building the internal structure and system on. Here's all the comp credits students need, here's the competencies and standards under those credits. And then here are the bodies of evidence students can use to show that they've met it. And it's been quite a process, like the GED is only available for students that are in open doors. You can only go in open doors if you are appropriately credit deficient. So that was one of those things was students that weren't credit deficient were moving in towards a GED, but they were well on track for a high school diploma. So in free of time, so they could go do a plumbing job or you know what I mean? But now you wanted to actually make it so they were appropriately placed and not just using the GED. When. Gee, it's, it's not supposed to be available in that area. It's only supposed to be available if you are. Enrolled and if you showed that you were in need for the open doors process. It shouldn't be your first course of action. So that was why that was the first step and then the second step was showing. So it's been a, um. A big lift.
And with that, just ultimately, like right now, our open doors program really kind of just focuses on juniors and seniors struggling in high school. But really the true meaning of open doors was really to do, bring in students that we lost. After graduation or didn't graduate and can we reach out to those students and bring them back and at least help with the GED? Um, you know, and then if we, if we can grow this program in the way it needs to be, then we can, you know, hopefully providing them services. Cause we've got a lot of, you know, we have a gap of 18 to 21 year olds. That really we could, I don't want their, their couch surfing or they're just on the couch and what can we do to maybe re-engage them? If I can get them into, through the doors, two hours a week, that's a win. Um, you know, and then maybe we can at least touch bases, but one, it could be just providing services so that they're healthy. And then next is how can we get them connected to, uh, a GED so they have something handy and then maybe that could be a diploma. Look at some things. So that's kind of where we're going with that too. So.
Down the road spot, but do you know how many 18 to 21 year olds that we have lost?
I do not know on the spot because, um, that one's a tricky one because we have a high graduation rate at Alma High School.
Yeah.
But that didn't mean that that transferred over to the ALE program.
Okay.
And sometimes if they move to another school district, we don't, we don't trace that, but they could be back in Elma. And then because we're, we can also be recruiting within.
Right. Yeah.
Great hard to kill.
Yeah. Just be an interesting number. No, like.
I have not yet, that's the next task on, um, on Marisol is to kind of start going through those. And we, we know we could start going through those records, but I've got to get all this other stuff in order. I can't, we can't grow a program unless we have our, our processes in place. And that's where ESV and, um, open doors can do programs that we grow if we have red processes, um, in place. Um, instead, in original, in baseline staffing, but then we could, we, you know, as it grows, we, we, that's definitely.
Yeah.
And then even with ESBA, if ESBA is going to grow and maybe it's taken away from parts of the high school. We may be enlisted some of the high school staff to support some of that too. Cause again, we have to have that, that fiscal balance also. But that's a lot. I mean, that's.
Down the road.
Down the road.
But it's visionary.
It is visionary.
This is good. Appreciate all the work you've been putting in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Well, tomorrow I'm going to go to Kent and I'm going to learn more about it. I, I tell you what, ALE is a, it's a. I can pretty much tell you a lot about CTE, but the ALE world is that, you know, CTE has its own plethora of compliance states. ALE is that plus. So.
Well, again, thank you. And, uh. Here's to the future of getting everything in a row and, and capturing some of those that are, that are actually really in need of people that we could be serving and they're not.
Right. Well, it goes back to growing our economy. But again, we know that we really have to have a skill base. Um, and open doors not only allows us to, with just, you know, whenever we say GED plus, we kind of think high school diploma, but that doesn't have to be it. It could be GED plus then call it a college cert. Things like that, because it brings in funds that it can help us support those students to get those certifications and pay for that. Um, so there's definitely ways of growing the workforce and trainings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, not just having a diploma or GED, but actually getting them so that they get some of those certs.
That's cool. Good options. But do you have anything else for Kristen? Thank you, Christie. All right. Onto fun procedures. Uh, where's that? All right. Uh, procedure 11, 10P elections. So, uh. We kind of talked about this a little bit, the, uh, we have our adopted procedure, but then I had brought up the fact that there's, uh. Other districts with kind of like a. Kind of like a model transition plan that kind of shows onboarding and stuff. So in your guys' packet, I kind of included, uh, Pullman's onboarding transition packet. And I, I include that, not that I want to adopt it verbatim, but I just wanted some ideas. And is that something we want to do as far as a procedure? Cause ours doesn't necessarily look like that. Just I felt like maybe something onboarding a little bit more like that and put an Elma twist on it would be nice.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any thoughts?
I like it. I like the idea of sending them through, um, expected courses, things they're going to probably want to know through WhatsApp. I also like the idea that there's a mentor.
Yeah, teaming them up, uh, you know, it's kind of very clear expectations and then, um, for that, for the mentor and for, uh, the incoming, uh, board member.
It's hard to come in here with baptism by fire. It's not fun. It's.
There's a.
There's a lot.
You don't know.
And plus, more members come in at different times too. Sometimes our appointments and others are through the elections.
Right.
And it's important that regardless when they come in, because usually a lot of our initial training, um, is at the conference. But unfortunately that's usually after the new hires or the newly elected. People come on board. So they have that full year where they don't really know what the role responsibility is. And I think it's important. It just will strengthen the board by providing that earlier on.
Yeah.
Honestly, this, if you look at it, it doesn't have anything really specific to that district, other than the strategic plan. And other than that, most of it's all.
It's very true. I thought it was ours.
Yeah, it's mostly was the.
And tell us.
Yeah, state.
Get this.
Yeah. I really liked the team transition part of it as far as, is sitting together as a team and just talking and getting to know the new person, getting, letting them getting to know. Other members on the team. I think that's a great icebreaker. And, um, I remember coming on my site and not knowing anything. And, you know, it just helps use some nerves, I think.
Mm-hmm.
So remind me, Chris, on this procedure itself. Um, once we go through it, that isn't necessarily something we have to adopt. It's just something we have to suggest, give you some working feedback.
Yeah, I mean, the 1000s are unique procedures that you do.
Okay. Okay, absolutely. Yes.
Generally speaking, you adopt. Outside of the 1000s, you adopt the board policy.
And followed by a procedure.
And then we, my office, Chris and I have been working on procedures today. We write procedures and then Candace adopts the procedures with no action from the board. So Candace will come forward and ask for direction from the board under discussion items, but it doesn't take, procedures take no vote.
Okay. So other than that, so if, if we like what we're seeing, just kind of give you some feedback then maybe a little bit on the procedures? Or is there something that we need to put in? Maybe the policy that would help with the procedures on this one or the, you know, 1000s is us, right? That's what you're saying? Okay, absolutely.
You should do whatever you want.
All right. Okay.
I mean, yeah, if it's a policy, you need to vote on it. If it's a procedure, just let Candace know.
All right. That's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear, because when we jump from the 5000s to the 1000s and it's just totally different.
Less, because the thousands are all about you.
Well, I just want everything all about me.
Or us.
Finally about.
Yeah. So, okay. Well, I will, um. If anybody has any changes, if they don't, then, um. Candace will put it in our format, because Pullman has a drastically different format than we do. So. And we can move forward to having that on the next, uh, meeting as a first reading. All right. So nothing further on that, uh, strategic plan update.
Um, do you want to?
I can lead or you can, I mean.
I think maybe it's, if you take the lead and then I backfill.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we, um, interviewed three, uh. Different people as far as going through, uh, potential for a strategic plan, just kind of give an idea where they're at and then kind of come back with some options. The, the, the first one, uh, went through how we'd break it down and, um, basically how we would, uh, move with. A, like a cultural movement, basically at first kind of getting a cultural alignment with a lot of communication and stuff. With some directed feedback in the strategic plan to build it. And it would, the timeline would be lengthy, which I think both the first and the third one we interviewed talked about kind of a lengthy timeline, which. To me sounded, uh. Sounded spot on, uh, as, as far as kind of how they were talking about how we would go through the process and what that process looked like if we wanted. Um, engagement like we've been asking for, right? The directed engagement, because you have to get basically little groups to meet. You don't want to meet in very large groups. So you kind of compartmentalize each piece and then you bring stuff together and you do that and bring it together and come up with ideas. So, um, I was impressed with her, the second one we interviewed, um. I'm not entirely sure, uh, about this, the second one, just as far as, um. If it was a good fit for us in, in general, uh, she has done some local ones. She did, uh, one for a couple of local districts, but, um, I wasn't really clear on exactly what the plan would look like. So that's why I say that. And then also just interest in, in general. Um, I can send everybody examples that we did receive. I figured that would probably be a good stepping stone in the update. And then the third, um, was very energetic, energetic and really aligned to work that we have been doing. Um, just in general, like as far as, um, dealing with, um. Alignment and mastery base and stuff like that with the grading scale. Um, also just the strategic plan and the timeline was well laid out, like this is how we would do it. We would do same, same, similar like group activities and stuff. And I can send you guys those examples, because I think the examples kind of speak a little bit to it and then I can backfill, um, information on that. And Chris can back.
Fill out on the 25th, we were set up to kind of go through examples of what they've made and gave them through this week to send us some of their examples and what they had. So on the 25th, we would go through. I think what we're looking for tonight is, is just direction from the board on what you would like to see from the different people that do strategic planning. That would help you make a decision.
Like exactly what are we looking for from the, the specific person? Cause each time I went into each one of those and Chris would ask, oh, oh, we would ask like, what are we looking for? To me, I've never done one before. So it's like, well, walk me through how you would do it. Okay. This is where we're at in our district. How do you? And then it came to, well, I need to know what we want to ask questions for, like what are we looking for? I know we say engagement, what's that look like? Is directed engagement, is full engagement like? What, you know, where are we at? And then where's our timeline? Is that a lengthy timeline? Cause most everybody feels like we're in a process that is. You know, a little bit of a lengthy process. You're looking at a strategic plan to three to five, right? And that plan is going to take a little while to put together.
Would you like us to email you out examples of the strategic plans that different people have done? I think that's kind of the question is, what is, what type of information can we share that would help you out? I think I've been giving Michael reports, I can include them in the next report. These are the people we've interviewed and these are the examples of strategic planning work they've done.
I don't deserve. Okay. We just got one the other day, so we haven't got all of them yet. So this is kind of a mini update. Um, since it was one of our board, board goals and stuff, just to kind of see what that timeline's like. And just to show that timeline is going to be slow.
When you said strategic plan, you said three to five, you're talking three to five year plan?
Well, you would put a three to five year plan together, strategic plan, right? That's typically what a strategic plan is, right? Three to five, or you can, I guess you can do. No, like.
Are you saying years?
Do they talk about years or is it in?
Cause usually you do an annual strategic plan.
Is it?
Um, the, this, this is the big picture. You have a five-year strategic plan.
But then you have a year, yes. And what it, it wasn't a strategic, it was an action plan or something.
Yeah, it's to see where you evaluate and see where you are on your little roadmap to successfully completing those plans.
So, I mean, what they do is you have your overarching.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, one of the people, um, refers to them as their pillars, you know, or you have your overarching goals. And they have each so many years, we're going to get this done, this done, this done, this done, this done.
I would like to see examples, just because. We have not met with a person and digested what our goals are fully and. I think really agreed on, I mean. I think really agreed on, I mean, right, like.
For the future? Yes. I would agree with that statement. Yeah.
So let me combine, we'll send those out on Friday.
Okay.
And we'll have links and you can look at examples of what they have.
Okay.
I think that's what the guidance we were looking for is what what would you like to see to make sure we're.
I'm super interested in the lengths of what they're considering a timely process to to make.
I think um they're thinking once at eight months.
Mm hmm.
Um, but we're partially in one thing's two years.
I mean, even Mary said that it takes, you'd be starting now and it takes about a year, uh you know, I mean, kind of when she was walking through the timeline when we did our board goals. So, and that's why I mean, like, if you're sitting here wondering what to ask, that was kind of what I felt like when I was actually meeting with them too, right? So it's like. I don't know what to ask, because I don't know. Exactly how the process goes, right? Until somebody starts sitting with us and building that process. So for me, when I was, you know. Asking and listening, it was kind of just feeling out how they would take me through the process for somebody that didn't know and that's kind of. Kind of how I was judging my feelings in my notes, but I can put that together and send that. Along with the examples. So.
I think that just I. I think for um the sake of time and for the sake of um expenses. I want to be very efficient in whatever that choice may be. And I don't want to be. I want a process that's streamlined with someone I don't, I don't think, I think when we enter into it, I don't want a lot of pivoting, um because pivots cost money. I mean, I'm assuming these are not on just to. This is how it goes. I mean, if we extend they, you know, right, we're paying for that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's when you start getting into a cost, it's do they, do we organize the surveys? And then they help review and break down the surveys. Do they organize the surveys? Do we do the listening session? Do we do the listening session? Um, I mean, one of them runs a strategic plan very consistent. I mean, we have core core areas. And one of their core areas are very similar to ours. So she said, well, I could probably do a lot of trimming here because. Our core, you're the core areas you've been working on and the core areas I work on are generally are really close. So now, so realistically, what we need to do is we need to look at the pieces of the core areas.
So I say, the last one aligns well with our.
That's why she was saying, that's why she was saying eight months, because she was going.
Okay, speaking in such general terms for the timeline, uh that's what I had in my head was like, boy, are they just saying this is what it's going to take or are we talking about? Like, we're breaking it down to be very efficient on what we need and not be repetitive in our process.
Yeah, I think when you see them, because you'll see the scope and the strategic plans that they built don't look the same at all.
Okay.
So I think it might be worth looking at their final off products.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, there's some that have like a lot in it.
Okay.
And it says like, in the next five years, we're going to get this very large list of things done. And then there's some where it's like, we're doing four core areas and we're doing three things in those core areas each year. And to move together, these four, these four core areas have measurable goals. About five year out measurable goal, we're going to be doing these pieces every year to another, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Very matrix.
Yes.
And it, yeah.
Final products.
It's going to be very streamlined.
I know, and I know that I try to be careful exactly what I say too, because. You know, I mean, respect to everybody that we interviewed with too, right?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, so I I I think that, yeah, send, send it out and and let us.
Let me get a better idea.
We'll put our eyeballs on it if you would please. Thank you.
I think looking at what they've made will give you a better idea, because what they've made is then going to give you some insight into their process.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Public comment? All right, unfinished business. Approval of policy one zero zero five, key functions of the board first reading. Do you not know why this is loading so slowly tonight?
Yeah, it's eating up my battery too.
Going well. Technology. Anybody have anything? This is on the.
I'll make a motion to approve policy one zero zero five, key functions of the board first reading.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve policy ten oh five, key functions of board first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Uh, approval of policy eleven oh five. It's just RCW updates.
I'll move for the approval of policy eleven fourteen, board number. No.
Policy eleven oh five.
Five, director districts first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve policy eleven oh five, director districts first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those, if they were to say aye.
Aye.
I was supposed to say nay, motion carries. That one was kind of a tongue twister. Approval of policy eleven fourteen, board member resignation first reading. It's another RCW update.
Um, I'll prove, uh, make a motion for the approval of policy one, one, one for board member resignation first reading.
Second.
It's been moved a second to do approve policy one, one, one for board member resignation first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. I was supposed to say nay, motion carries. Uh, approval of new policy eleven fifteen vacancies.
Just so weird, they've almost dragged the whole thing. It's just a tiny bit left.
Right, yeah, I remember it's just replacing uh to to basically compartment, yeah. Biding them out.
I'll make a motion to uh approve the new policy one, 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 five vacancies first reading.
I'll second that.
Moving second, approve new policy one, 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 five vacancies first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. All right, new business, approval of high cap program for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve the highly capable program for twenty-five, twenty-six.
My second.
It's been moving second to approve the highly capable program for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there any discussion? Seeing that all does in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five CTE strategic plan and end of year report.
I'll move for the approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five CTE strategic plan and end of year report.
I'll second that.
It's been moved a second to approve twenty twenty-four, twenty-five CTE strategic plan and end of year report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Approval of Alma twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine CTE district wide plan.
I'll move for the approval of Alma twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine CTE district wide plan.
A second.
It's been moving second to approve Alma twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine CTE district wide plan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. I got so concerned about how long the next one was, and I kind of forgot what I was. Okay.
I make a.
Hold on.
Yep.
Uh, approval to continue uh credit dual or dual credit articulations with community college. And to continue to pursue new articulation agreements with the current colleges and other colleges across the state.
I'll make a motion to approve the continued current dual credit articulations with community colleges and to continue to pursue. New articulation agreements with the current colleges and other colleges across the state.
It's been moved in seconded to approve item D ten D. No, I can do it. It's been moved a second to approve. To continue current dual credit articulation with community colleges and to continue pursuing new articulation agreements with. Current colleges and other colleges across the state. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Approval of Alma CTE graduation pathways twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll move for the approval of Alma CTE graduation pathways twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
So moved and second to approve uh Alma CTE graduation pathways for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Arrival to pursue Carl Perkins and other grants for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
I make a motion to approve, to pursue Carl Perkins and other grants for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'll second.
It's been moving second to approve to pursue the Carl Perkins and other grants for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay. Motion carries. Arrival of CTE equivalency credited courses.
I'll move for the approval for the CTE equivalency credited courses.
I'll second.
Been moved in second to approve the CTE equivalency credited courses. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Approval of CTE advisory committee members for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'm going for the approval for CTE advisory committee members for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the CTE advisory committee members for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Approval to accept bid for middle school gym roof replacement by J R. Swigard Company Inc., is that how you say that?
Yes.
Yes, today. I think Elswood School, that's one that you've done and you got very good high remarks on them. So you would like to follow for using them in a school group.
I'll move for the approval of to accept the bid for the middle school gym roof replacement by J R Swigger Company Inc.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the bid for the middle school gym replacement by J R Swigger Company Inc. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Approval to recover or not recover levy dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve to recover.
Not, not to recover, right?
It says approval to recover or not recover levy dollars. Do we have to say one or the other?
I think so. Yeah.
You never write it that way. We just read it verbatim. Okay, approval to not. I make a motion for the approval not to recover levy dollars.
I'll second.
As clear as I can be on that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve not to recover levy dollars. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries. Superintendent's report.
I think um. I covered the WSA, it was a big portion of what I was going to discuss about. Voice cross country did take sixteenth in state. Winter sports are beginning, um, we're really impressed with how that will be showing in some group of underclassmen. So we know that our state, our cross country team is just going to continue to improve. And then we um start winter sports on Monday. So pretty excited about the direction where we're moving. That, I mean, I recovered a a WSA tour, so. It's a pretty short report, I guess.
It's all right.
Um, good of the order.
Um, future agenda items, I think it's just worth noting that we're going to move the board meeting to the high school next week. Um, it is on Tuesday, it is in November twenty-fifth, board meeting.
Not next week.
Next week, the following week.
I like, I won't not.
We will be at the high school November twenty-fifth. Um, we're going to take a tour of the unified robotics program.
We have a built-in recess in our meeting, so we will have a built-in.
To go to see the awards, um, the unified robotics program gives us a chance to opportunity to see the program. Um. And then I think we'll actually go through, we'll begin filling out the remainder of the future agenda items, because I think the plan now is to adopt. Or goals, which will allow us to fill out the remainder of the agenda items for the remainder of the year.
Uh, anything else on it? Yeah, that that's the biggest thing is getting that filled out. I have some other stuff that I'm going to send you guys to take a look at. Uh, one being um, one of our goals was the uh. Our annual evaluation, so I have that all together from WSA. I should send that out and then we'll be able to go over that. Uh, for incoming and outgoing, so. Should we get, anybody else have anything else? Going on? All right, that.
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded during the meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, I forgot to show it to some of the faculty, these professional players on your C program.